Okay, next we'll have comments from visitors. If you have a comment, please come to the podium, give us your name and address, and you'll have about three minutes to address the council. The council will not address you in any way. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on. We have a public hearing this evening. We'll have one public hearing on this evening's agenda for the purpose of presenting the and adopt the proposed 2025 City of Fulton budget and the three-year capital program. The format of the hearing will be as follows. I will give three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition, and in turn, three calls for anyone speaking in favor of. We ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address. This hearing is now open. I will ask for the first call for anyone speaking, wanting to speak in opposition of the present budget for 2025. Seeing no one, I'll ask for the second call for anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the present 2025 budget. Still need, seeing no one, I'll call for the third time. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter? Seeing no one, I will give three calls for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the matter at hand. First call for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the 2025 budget. Seeing no one, I'll give the second call for anyone that is present that wishes to speak in favor of this matter. Seeing no one, there'll be a third call if there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this matter. Again, seeing no one, the hub, the public hearing is now closed. We'll return to our regular agenda. Okay, now I will call for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is the lighted Christmas parade and the annual Christmas parade, and the appointment of Lindsey Pace Snook to the PARC board for a three-year term.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Very well, any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well, thank you. Now we'll have the presentation of the September DOA report.
Thank you, Mayor. So as indicated in the report, we had a lot of events going on and a lot of different projects going on over the month of September. Again, I want to give a quick shout out to the Callaway Chamber of Commerce and everyone that had any hand in the 2024 Connecting Entrepreneurial Communities Conference. Brought a lot of wonderful professionals to our community, and I know everyone had an excellent time. We had a lot of really positive feedback and a lot of great things that happened as a part of that conference as well. So I will, I will turn it back over to the council, and if you guys have any questions, staff is here and available to answer them. We do have a couple department heads that are not here this evening, so if we need to get back with you on an answer, we can certainly do that as well.
Point.
Okay, I, I don't really have any questions, just a couple points. I appreciate the, the work that's done, that was performed by the Street Department on the Lutheran Church, the drainage ditch there. It's much improved, still not ideal what I'm after to get it underground, but it'll, it'll work for now. And I also want to point out on page 11 of the DOA report, our utilities, we've sent a crew down to Florida to help with the recovery efforts of Hurricane Milton. And I think the whole number of personnel from Missouri was 58 according to this report. And according to the news, the governor of, Governor DeSantis of Florida said there were 50,000 utility workers ready to spring in ash, and they restored power very quickly. So thank you to our crews for participating in that, and are they back, I presume? Good, all right, good. So that's, that's what we had to do is help, lend a helping hand when something like that happens, so thank you all. That's all I have.
Okay, anyone else? Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second to approve the DOA report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well, we'll move on to the presentation of September financial statement.
Dustin Doherty, City Fulton CFO. City Fulton recorded eight months of sales tax in 2024. Collections are up 2.1% from 2023, and use taxes up 15.7% from 2023. You guys have had a chance to review the statement, did you have any questions?
No questions.
I think so too. Second.
Very well, thank you Dustin.
Thank you.
Thank you Dustin. Yes.
We have a motion and a second to accept the September financial statement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we have no unfinished business tonight, nor do we have new business. We'll move on to council concerns. Councilman Hinchey is not with us tonight, Councilman West.
I have no concerns. Human Rights Commission has not met since our last meeting, however, they are working on Planned Assily event in, in December, on December 21st, so that could, so continue to watch out for that, but other than that, no items.
Okay. Councilwoman Reclu?
Yes, good, good afternoon. First thing I have is I'd like to say a little bit about our highlight that we have on our, our website on Saturday of the employee, and then we pay employee every week. I think that's wonderful, I love, I love seeing that, I don't know who started, but it's wonderful. I think we should take care of our employees, we've got some wonderful people. And I really appreciate that Saturday thing that we're doing on a top highlight, I believe it's called. And I believe at this time, that's about all I have, but thank you everyone.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Stone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Historic Preservation Commission met yesterday, I was unable to attend, so I'll be watching for the minutes on that. Just a reminder, Historic Preservation meets the third Monday of every month at 1:00 in the council's executive conference room, and all are welcome, all citizens, staff, administration, council members, everybody. And the only item that I've got is kind of a, of a shout out. I've been watching the, the progress of the reconstruction of the historical column on Second Street, and they, they just started the, the stonework that's going to make it. I was really worried if it was truly going to match, and they started that this week, and you can tell that it's going to be a perfect match to what we have. So just a shout out to whoever signed that contract and got those people here. It looks like it's going to be a great marker. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Do we have an update on when they intend to complete that?
Well, I know it's taking a little bit longer than what was originally anticipated, but Charlene has been in contact with that contractor, and they're just, they're trying to get through things as quickly as they can. I appreciate you bringing up the matching aspect because we also had some concerns, and I think it's difficult when, you know, the marker was 100 years old. So it can be quite difficult to, to match stone perfectly, but we will certainly keep you guys in the loop on the progress of, of that project and, and when we have an anticipated completion date.
Thank you. Councilman Luther couldn't be with us tonight, Councilman Combs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning and Zoning Commission could not meet tonight due to lack of forum. It sounds like we're down two people now, so we wanted to get that filled. But in terms of concerns, I don't have any tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Park Board was unable to do to lack of forum or obstacle, but it was very informational for us to just have information people would be looking for, so they shared with those that were in attendance. So, but other than that, the Carver, Carver project is rolling. And then, you know, I would do, I would work at the park school and just look like, and be not that big into it and get something done. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Utility Board has not met since our last council meeting. I have one concern, and I know that I have brought it up a couple of other times, parking on Arrow. Alan, I believe that that's your ward. I think it's continued to be a problem, and I don't know what the solution is, but I know that there is one family that has contacted me several times, I do know them personally, and they are having problems with people actually parking in front of their driveway. They can't get out, and so I know that it has to do with the apartment across the street, there is, there's parking there, but the people are choosing, the tenants are choosing to use the street instead of the parking lot. So I'm not sure if there's anything that we can do about that, maybe a setback from the stop sign as well, I know we had kind of talked about that, but I just wanted to bring that up again to see if maybe we could address it.
Thank you very much, we can definitely take a look at that with police and engineering, and if we need to take any action to the Public Safety Commission, we'll bring that up with them as well.
Perfect, I know that she runs a daycare as well, so some concerns were the safety of the kids getting on and off the bus whenever there's cars that close to the, to the drive as well. So I appreciate that so much, and that was my only concern.
If I may, I, I think that's come, that's been going on for a while, that's, somebody kind of made, contacted me over two years ago, I believe, so yeah. That's been going on for a while.
But if we could look at it again?
I think dumpsters were, dumpsters were being, the roll-off carts were being left out and, and just contributing to the whole problem. It's not a very big street, so.
It's not, yeah, it's real short and it's a cul-de-sac, but it's a tiny little cul-de-sac.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I forgot something. I actually meant to cover this in the DOA report. We repaved Fourth Street last week, and it's much improved, I think. So kudos to the Street Department for coordinating that as well.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3557, I-70 Natural Gas War, Project COF 24-10, a resolution of the City of Fulton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri to execute all necessary documents in relation to a contract with the lowest and most qualified bidder for the installation of a high-pressure gas pipeline under Interstate 70 near mile marker 124, and establishing an effective date. Make a motion, we pass resolution 3557 at tonight's council meeting.
Second. I'll second that, I'll second that with the correction that it's mile marker 142.
Yes, I know, I guess I'll have to give it a proper, I know you're wrong.
Okay, very good, this is a subject we've been talking about for the last year and a half, it's kind of happened, and it's gotten here, so I know they had meetings last week, I believe, to open the bid, so. It's definitely the, it's definitely the best bid. I put out an open meeting that they explained how they're going to put that new gas line in without interrupting any gas.
Daryl, can you come, okay, he's heading up here, he can answer these questions.
Kyle was going to do this, but he went home today feeling a little janky. Actually, we asked him to go home, we, we prefer he went home today, he was getting worse as the day went on. Geding is who, who is the apparent low bidder. Our engineer did check the references, Ameren's used them before, would use them again, and so has Panhandle, so their reference checked. They was at the pre-bid and actually went and looked at the job site before the pre-bid, so, and came with a list of questions, so we feel very confident that they're good. Probably the timeframe is probably going to be January-ish because of getting material in. So that's, we're waiting on a definitive timeline, but that's, that's the estimate right now. And then our engineering consultant, Ted Kelly, will probably have to, we'll have to amend his contract also due to inspection, and we're thinking it's going to be around 120,000, but it may run over that, depends how many times the welding inspector's got to come back, if they can do it in one trip or if it's two. So you're talking about the 645, 386, probably plus another 120 is where we're at.
Well, this is significantly under, under the budget and the other bid, so is there any concerns you have there?
I talked to Kyle today, when they opened the bid, Kyle asked Geding, are you, are you good with your bid? And they said, yeah, we're fine with our bid.
Okay.
The other person was at the pre-construction conference also. They're from Troy, so they're not having to travel very far either, that might be some of the difference in the money.
Well, I'm glad you checked the references, so, you know, we'll see what happens, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, is there any concern, this is in the 2024 capital budget, it looks like expenditures may move into 2025, is there any concerns with that?
We've accounted for it in the 2025 as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose? There we go. We'll move on to ordinances, we'll have first reading. Councilwoman Reclu, would you read bill number 1732, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1732, Budget amended, and ordinance authorizing amendments to the City of Fulton budget for the fiscal year 2024 as outlined by Article 58, Financial Procedure, Section 8, Point 8, amending, amendment after adoption, Paragraph C, Transfer of Appropriations Fulton City Charter and establish an effective date. I make a motion that bill number 1732 for second reading at the next scheduled meeting.
Very well, I think we've discussed this, does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, all in favor of moving bill 1732 to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well. Now we'll move to second reading of bill number 1728, which is the 2025 budget. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1728, 2025 budget, and ordinance adopting an official budget and capital improvement program and appropriating the funds of the City of Fulton for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025 and ending December 31, 2025. Make a motion, we move bill number 1728 to third reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Okay, any questions? I know a lot of you've had questions, and that's great, and you had them answered. Councilman?
Not a question, Mr. Mayor, but I met with Courtney, Sam, and Dustin about a week, I guess, Julie, it was a week ago, and got a lot of questions answered in a different summary, so I appreciate those efforts and I'm satisfied very much, thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor of bill, moving bill 1728 on to the next council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Okay, we'll have now bill number 1729, Councilman Combs, would you read that for us? And that's the easement for the new Aldi's down there.
All right, yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1729, easement vacated, and ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton to sign all necessary documents to vacate all right, title and interest therein of an area of easements located in Block 100 of the City of Fulton, Missouri in favor of Aldi Incorporated of Fulton, Missouri. I make a motion to place bill number 1729 for third and final reading at this meeting.
Second.
Very well, do we have any discussion on? Seeing none, all in favor of bill number 1729, the easement vacated, please say yes.
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 Oppose? Very good. Okay, would you read that again for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1729, easement vacated, and ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton to sign all necessary documents to vacate all right, title and interest therein of, of an area of easements located in Block 100 of the City of Fulton, Missouri in favor of Aldi Incorporated of Fulton, Missouri. I make a motion to pass bill number 1729 at this meeting.
Second.
Thank you, we have, again, a motion and second to pass bill number 1729 at the now, tonight's meeting, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk, would you read the roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hinchy, Mr. Luther, Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Six council members affirmative?
Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to bill number 1730. Councilman, Councilwoman Reclu, would you please read that for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, should we do the third reading also, or shall we? Does that be okay?
Yeah.
I would say, I would say that would be preferable, and then if there's any concern, we can always back off that.
Yeah.
Yes. Bill number 1730, amended parking on Wood Street prohibited or limited, and ordinance amending Chapter 110, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 110-340, parking on a certain street prohibited or limit of the Fulton City Code to prevent traffic implement, implement near the Fulton Early Childhood Center by prohibiting stopping, standing, or parking on the, on either side of Wood Street beginning 500 feet north of Westwood Avenue and continuing north for a distance of 1,180 feet, including a penalty of $50 fine plus court cost for each violation and estimated and effective date. I make a motion, that bill number 1730, for third reading at this meeting.
Second.
Very well. Does, does anyone have any questions? I think we've discussed this a great length. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Councilwoman Reclu, would you read that again for us, please?
Yes, sir. Bill number 1730, amended parking on Wood Street prohibited or limiting, and ordinance amending Chapter 110, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 110-340, parking on certain streets prohibited or limited. The Fulton City Code to prevent traffic implement near the Fulton Early Childhood Center by prohibiting stopping, standing, or parking on either side of Wood Street beginning 500 feet north of Westwood Avenue and continuing north to a distance of 1,180 feet, including a penalty of $500, excuse me, yeah, thank you, $50 fine, court cost for each violation and estimated and effective date. I make a motion for bill number 1730 for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
Yes.
Does anyone have a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Luther, Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Six council member, oh, Mr. Hinchy, six council members affirmative, two absent.
Okay, they passed, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to bill number 1731, it's a speed limit reduction on Clay Mine. Councilman West, would you read that for us, please?
Yes. Bill number 1731, ordinance number blank, amended, speed limit reduction on Clay Mine Drive, and ordinance amending Chapter 110, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 110-248, speed limits, Paragraph 3 of the Code of the City of Fulton, Missouri, by lowering the speed limit on Clay Mine Drive to 20 miles per hour and establish an effective date. I may, make a motion to place bill number 1731 for third reading at this council meeting.
Second.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have a discussion on that? Seeing none, Councilman West, do you read that again for us, please? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm moving along too quick tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Councilman?
All right.
You read that again, please?
Yes, sir. Bill number 1731, ordinance number blank, amended, speed limit reduction on Clay Mine Drive, and ordinance amending Chapter 110, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 110-248, speed limits, Paragraph 3 of the Code of the City of Fulton, Missouri by lowering the speed limit on Clay Mine Drive to 20 miles per hour and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place bill number 1731 for final passage at this council meeting.
Second.
Very well, we have a motion and second to pass bill number 1731 at tonight's meeting, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington? Mr. West?
No.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Hinchy, Mr. Luther. So that would be four council members in favor, two council members opposed, and two absent.
Okay, thank you. Announcements, the next council meeting will be Tuesday, the 12th. Fulton Police Department is having the Fulton Police Department is having the trunker treat out at Morgan Socker Complex, and it's a dollar a person, and the donations all go to Shop of the Hero. City Hall Legends and Solid Waste will all be closed on Monday, the 11th, for Veterans Day. And the Parks and Rec staff is getting ready for the Festival of Lights, which will officially open on December the 5th. There will be some changes that night in traffic flow down there, so you might be aware of that. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. It will be to discuss legal actions.
Mr. Mayor, just a shameless plug, Fulton Quanis is having Pancake Day on November 1st, and I've got tickets for sale.
And I've got mine. I move, we move into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington? Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Hinchey, Mr. Luther, Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Six council members affirmative.